Here. Okay. Uh, pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Good God. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call it all.
Ms. Fiesel?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunbar?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes. Okay, we've really got kind of, let's say, three items here. Finalizing the CIP, doing some strategic planning, and then setting the superintendent objectives at 13 or 14. Dr. Luke's indicated Pete's will be here in about five, so try to get about 25 minutes to work in, take a break, and then progress through the rest. So with that, let's just start right with the CIP.
I don't know.
Yeah, absolutely.
We want to do the timeline maybe last. Do we need to talk about the other things first? You're talking about the timeline that you created with the BOA.
We'll do that as second item. So we're going to do the CIP update first.
Okay.
And then the strategic timeline would be a component of the second agenda item, or item six of the agenda. Does everyone have the CIP?
Yep.
Or the revised CIP? And then the upstanding items were six, seven, and eight, is that correct?
Yes.
So do we have revisions for six, seven?
Yes. Pass out.
Unless we have anything to go from one through five, I mean...
Well, yeah, let's back up a bit. So at the last work session, right, we get Jack Fettie come through, right, kind of hammer it through, all of the items on the CIP, and then with a specific request to revisit six, seven, and eight. So let's do six, seven, and eight.
Okay.
And then we'll go back to any other changes that we want to entertain.
And I just printed out, I realize now, just the revisions, so I don't even have eight, because it's not on your springboard.
But it's coming.
So we get the...
You have the revisions?
Yeah, I have a revision for, you want to go ahead and start with me?
Yeah.
Then. I had a revision for benchmark six. It's kind of a two-part type thing. Benchmark six, there is a, there's a bullet point, maintain or decrease the total expenditures per pupil ranking and imminent extraveh expenditures per pupil rankings as benchmarks against comparable districts, as determined by State of Ohio and Olentangy Board of Education. My proposal would be, benchmark six is talking about responsible financial management, which is more of a long, I would say, back from my own audit days, more of a compliance type area. We're talking about the bond ratings, we're talking about CAFR, and the audit as far as itself, as far as citations and comments and stuff like that. So my recommendation would be for that particular bullet point to move to benchmark seven. Your pupil rankings, all part of resource allocation and utilization. How we choose to staff our district, how we choose the number of administrators, or where we have people in place, kind of dictates that type of expenditure for pupil ranking and stuff. So that's kind of where the allocate. To me, that fits better underneath number seven, resource allocation utilization. I came up with some, pass out to everybody here, draft potential language.
Thank you.
And I also have some data stuff from ODE here, too.
Okay. Um, when you, in your second, I guess your second paragraph there...
Yes, the bullet point.
Yeah. When you say that the percent of the operating expenditures for classroom instruction versus non-classroom instruction purposes should be ranked the lowest as benchmarked against comparable districts, there is one comparable district who has gutted their district that's in our state comparison group.
Okay.
And I would, I mean, gutted it. And so, you know, I don't, I don't know that the lowest is a benchmark, but in the lower percentile, you know, the lower quadrant, almost?
So similar reaction, even the one on top, versus the district current ranking should again be the lowest.
Yeah.
I don't know if we want to peg it to a single spot, or within a quartile.
A quadrant.
Or something like that, I think, to give you, give us some variability from year to year.
Yeah. I, it's great to be efficient, but when there are districts in our state comparison group and that changes...
Yes, and I think...
I would hate to be compared to a district that had to gut itself because of multiple failures on a levy, you know? And so, we pride ourselves in offering, you know, 17 AP classes. Well, if we gut all those 17 AP classes to become the lowest, you know, that ranking, that's doing a disservice. Or if we cut, you know, intervention specialists or some, you know, then...
And that's exactly, I was being a little aggressive with the set.
Yeah.
And I was just kind of taking the draft CIP, the way you had in benchmark six there, the one I mentioned there, and it's kind of, okay, we kind of talked about this before as being the Lotus, you know, in the ranking and type of thing. But I'd be perfectly fine, that, I guess we need to probably better define what that quadrant would be, as you talk about, is the top 10% of comparable, I mean, you have, in the past, you had the 20 comparable districts out there. With the expenditures per pupil new rankings type system that they're going to, if you look on page one, if you look on your page one here, of the handout that I hand you, it has ODE at the Department of Education at the top. If you look at the second paragraph, second paragraph, second sentence, ODE is required by each type of public school, traditional, JVS, and community school into groups based primarily on enrollment. Primarily, with, you know, it's, so, we're going to be up against, you know...
Columbus.
Columbus.
Then we will be the lowest.
Yeah. So that would be nice. But then again, we're going to be up against, you know, some, what, Youngstown potential may be in there.
Right.
And if the system that's gutted their system, Cincinnati's probably gutted themselves a little bit, too.
Toledo.
Toledo. So hopefully, I mean, it just says primarily by enrollment, hopefully it still sticks to the socioeconomic type stuff is factored into there a little bit. As far as how they're exactly going to classify that, I don't know. I mean, but I guess, Mr. O'Brien and I talked about it a little bit, too, is using the ODE as a benchmark is, I think, an okay way to go, because they're neutral.
Yeah.
Because they're establishing the criteria. It's not us as a district saying, well, we don't handpick certain, you know, districts to compare ourselves against and...
And you are comparing apples to apples, because it's counting the same expenditures of each group.
I mean, my guess is, you know, some of the ones that are on our current comparable groups, Mason will still fall in there potentially, Dublin, Lakota will definitely fall in those type of areas. But there again, Lakota's a district, you mentioned, that's gutted itself.
Do they have a school, usually there's a school district that's a suburb of Dayton that starts with...
With Beaver Creek.
An S.
Oh, I'm forgetting.
I'm looking at the one from fiscal year 12, because of course fiscal year 13 hasn't been published out yet.
Sometimes they're in there with us, and that's...
Springboro is one.
That's the one.
But they're awfully small.
Right. And so that should come out, but...
So, you know, the Hilliards, at least we have local comparisons of Dublin and Hilliard, and probably Wurlington might be there.
I don't know if Westerville...
Is Westerville still on there, aren't they?
Sometimes they pull them out.
They're on the go.
As far as fiscal year 12, as similar district groupings, Westerville was not on there.
Yeah.
Pickerington's another local place that was on that group, but they're way down at the bottom of the, as far as, they rank them as Mason and Dublin are the two closest, and then Upper Arlington, but then again, Upper Arlington, based off their size and everything else, just as incomparable.
Might go away.
So I doubt they would be going forward.
My concern with adding the, because that's kind of a new thing, is saying we're going to be among the lowest, is we're right now comparing ourselves to ourselves by saying we want to maintain or decrease, that's fine, but then saying, and be among the lowest, we have no control over what that list looks like, what that, who might be in that list, what those other people will do. So would we call it a failure if we went from 9,600 to 9,000 because someone else went lower than us? So that's, that's my concern of...
Yeah, so we talked about it a little bit, so, two things. One, I like the idea of someone else picking the list.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, yeah, no, but I'm saying we're adding language here that wasn't in before about saying the lowest, to be one of the lowest, or you're saying even if we add a percentile in the bottom 25%, we have no control over...
The people.
Anything else.
Yeah.
What we're usually with these benchmarks are, we're focusing on us, we're maintaining or decreasing, or, but when you add that second lever in there, you end up, you could be a failure, you could go down to 8,000, and all the other schools could gut and go down to 7,000, and you'd have failed, because you'd suddenly be the highest on that list. So that's my concern on, on adding that second lever.
And that's anytime you use a relative benchmark, right?
Right.
So part of the value of a relative benchmark is making sure that you're taking the appropriate actions consistent with, you could argue, what's happening in the marketplace, in this case, the marketplace is your comparable school districts. So it should, you know, if that were to happen, that's, we should just, we should be able to explain why we perform the way we performed.
My problem's not with doing it, it's with the language. We didn't ever say before that we were going to be among the lowest. We just said we'd maintain or decrease.
So what would you like it to say?
With comparable, I would just take out, unless we're going to really define bottom quartile or have some...
Well, this is what we talked about, is amending it to either be, if the peer group is, you know, I don't know what they put in the ODE group, is it 20?
20 schools?
Yeah, so fiscal year 12.
You can put it into quartiles, you can put it in five quartile, and we should be, I would define it as the top quartile, and the top being the most efficient versus the bottom quartile.
Well, another way of maybe looking at it, too, is, I think we talked about it earlier too, is performance index. Do we tie tier that to, or put them in the, do you tie it to as part of, that's the ultimate result, in my, is...
The lowest of the top?
Honestly, lowest of the top percentage of...
Yeah, by the way, it was the first goal that gets you in with A, right?
Yes.
So, you know, so we have our comparable districts, we have our 20 comparable districts. We're, let's say, I think we were tied with Dublin last year, I think, I believe, in performance index.
I believe we were ahead.
We were ahead by one tenth of a...
By three tenths. And the level is at 107.3, 107.0.
That's a significant margin.
Even above Upper Arlington, too, I believe, right?
No, just...
Not quite, not quite. Anyway, so, anyway, so there, you're...
$1,000.
I'm still, hey, I'm still transitioning between, right, so I still got, but, anyway, so do you say, okay, so you have your peer group there, so let's say we're the top, the E performance index is the top five, so of the, I don't know how you systematically place it on a quadrant type thing, you'd probably have to draw squares and draw it on the thing, but how do you, do you tie it into the performance index score of the, so we may have a higher cost per pupil, but our performance index score is, you know, here compared to...
Which shows value.
Which shows...
Did we just come up with that? There was a previous conversation about all this, it was when Diamond was on the board, and I remember that same conversation was going on then, maybe not as specific as this.
Well, this came out as the way the benchmark was written in last year's CIP, we just said we'd measure ourselves to a benchmark, we never defined it.
Right.
Where could we ever score ourselves if we achieve what we want and what we're not?
We defined it previously, I thought.
I don't, we never tied it to the ODE.
Oh, I agree.
Yeah.
But we did have, there was a conversation when Diamond was on the board.
So I think in some respects, the score is the score, in other words, your cost per pupil is what it is. How you want to frankly rationalize where you land within the peer group relative to performance, relative to what other districts did, in my mind, that's some of the rationale explaining where you landed, where you landed, versus trying to overcomplicate it, and I hear what you're saying about, you do want to balance the cost per pupil to the performance, because those two are playing each other.
Which is what the new, what the new cost per pupil is going to show, because they're finally, I think they're finally going to tie it together.
Yeah, well, they're also, they're also going to, like I said, the second one there, they're also going to the classroom versus non-classroom instruction, where before you had your operations or your administrative and stuff, I think they're totally doing it, and which is what, and it's tying more to the federal standards, too, is as far as the cost is, what's in the classroom, what's not in the classroom, and some of the, just to give you a little background on that, too, is a lot of the stuff where we may have thought was non-classroom before, like your aides.
Yeah.
Now, we're with it, now they're going to be classroom, because, which makes sense, because they're touching a student, I mean, that's not touching a student, but they're in the classroom with that student, where before, you know, they weren't, or a gifted teacher, or something like that, you know, so...
I think it all comes down to return on investment. That was the original intent, which, if you recall, two years ago, I think, that was going to be part of the state report card, and it just disappeared. And I think eventually what they're getting to is, how do you perform and how much do you spend to perform that way? So what you're alluding to, I think, is exactly where the state wanted to be, they just don't have a rule, for lack of a better term, of, how do I figure that out? What is your return? If you're up here with a high performance index and here with an expenditure per pupil, what does that mean? And I think that's what we need to try to get to, but...
The only way to do is do your total expenditures over your score.
Go ahead.
Think of it some type of...
Of a ratio.
What's your dollars per point on the performance index? And that ties your expenditure.
We could call it the O'Brien index.
You'll take every call about it.
As long as it doesn't look like that, we'll say...
Well, that's your problem. Which is my idea of the E. We don't calculate it.
We don't do it, yes.
There are benchmarks.
Well, I like the idea of quartile.
Yeah, the CIP process is, you may have a failure, you may have, you don't want to fail.
Oh, right.
But it's not necessarily a failure, but it's room for improvement, or we need to look at.
At which we have one on our annual reports, we have places not met, and...
The other thing I wouldn't do is put in the actual 9,600, because we just have to, I mean, we're going to rewrite it every year anyway, but I wouldn't put it, I wouldn't put a number in.
Previous year's cost per pupil, if you can define it that way.
Well, just even leaving it out.
Yeah, I was just taking the most current information we had.
Current expenditure per pupil.
So what I heard we kind of agreed to, right, is we will maintain or decrease, and then we will compare ourselves to the, say, top quartile of the peer group would be the benchmark.
Yes.
Okay.
Top meaning lowest.
Top meaning lowest.
Yes. I don't want to say we want to try to be in the lowest...
We don't want to be Arlington spending, nor do we want to gut the programs.
Right. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
By the way, I did email everyone the draft that you're looking for. You have the revision, but I didn't just email you the entire...
The actual, yeah, because that's all I printed out, that's all I did.
From last year, because on the revisions, we left off eight, correct?
Yeah.
Revisions in the year.
Yeah.
So the one you just received in your email has eight on it.
In first class, or CIP draft, there?
On first class, yeah.
Got it. Thank you.
Let me ask you this, are we, as far as the process today?
Thanks.
Are we defining the exact language today?
Yes, and then we'll approve it at the next board meeting.
Okay. So I have time to go, I have, we actually, we have time to reword it here, we don't need to establish the exact wording tonight.
We even have an August eight work session if we need to take some more time to review.
I'm not going to Dallas. You forwarded the Jax thing, it says, what decided about Dallas?
There's an attachment.
Okay.
There's an attachment.
I was like, why is he asking me about Dallas?
Because even as a retreat, we actually can't take any action, right?
Right.
This is like a work session.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll come up with some language and send it around to you guys. Like I said, this is going to move...
CIP draft?
I'm sorry.
This is going to move from benchmark, my recommendation would be move from benchmark six to seven.
To the resource one.
Yeah.
And I like that idea.
And then the other ones will, as far as financial management's concerned, I guess the only concern would be the bond rating. Just from my experience, some of that is out of our control, for the fact that, just based off my prior life, Moody's just downgraded Dublin. And that had nothing to do with Dublin, we passed, you know, we did have a levy failure, we passed the levy. Everything's good, even change in leadership was another, one of the stuff they look as far as, but the biggest thing is there, the drain is the retirement systems.
Oh, and we don't have any control over the state comparison system.
We have no control. SMP maintained, the top tier, but Moody's downgraded, and they recited the retirement systems, which we explained to them, it is a pay-as-you-go system.
Right.
We, it is not any future liability on our books, but then again, they, it didn't matter to them, it's a nationwide issue. I doubt Olentangy would get downgraded because of that, it was, they looked at the highest AAA rated districts, and some of those got lowered, just because our factors, non-debt and other stuff like that, was ones, the lower tiered one, as far as the ratings weren't necessarily going to be reduced, so...
Because truthfully, at any time the state could come in and say, hey, we're so far underfunded, you, you school district, you're going to have to cough up more money, but...
The way it's legally set up now, it's that, I don't think could happen, but you never know.
Increasing the employee share.
Employee share, that they could, they could do that. I know that was a recommendation of STRS the last time, the retirement council, who then recommended to legislators, said, no way.
There probably had to be more to Dublin's downgrade than just STRS, though, right? Because...
Actually, we were...
But your point, it's... That was the main, that was the main driver, that which was out of their, out of the control, what it was.
Right, but if that, if you apply that logic, then every school district in the state of Ohio should be...
But they were, they had that...
They're reexamining, they've examined every...
We were talking to the analysts, and we were talking specifically about that.
This is before my time, yeah.
And this was like three weeks ago, and the Wade Brad Sprague, there's a, there's a formula that they come up with that applies to, and they tried to walk us through this formula, and, you know, it's like, okay, in Leavens terms, it would be, if your district has more veteran teachers that are closer to retirement than others, then you're probably going to get dinged with that piece on that rating system, which we're not there.
Yeah, the theory is you've got more exposure.
Exactly.
But was Dublin rated high, was their bond rating higher than ours? So they could be looking at everyone in that higher.
That's exactly what I said, it's part of the formula that you talked about.
Yeah, they're just wanting to...
Which is why we may never get there, too.
Right.
But...
Yeah.
It's hard to get to a rating, you know, get upgraded, it's easy to get downgraded, and you're not getting back to the upgraded status for a while.
Right.
Unfortunately. But anyways, so that would be my concern, but I think that's fine as far as responsible financial management, you have other potential one as far as compliance would be concerned, like I said, I call that a compliance area, responsible or internal control, going back to my audit taste again, would be, meet the provisions of the Affordable Care Act.
Yeah, because we have to make sure that our insurance...
So you propose to add that to benchmark?
That'd be, that'd be a potential, one, that's for a board discussion.
We got a one-year reprieve on the heads, is that correct?
One-year reprieve on the penalty phase. Still have to do it, but you still have the one year in the penalty phase, so...
And so then, under six, I'm just, again, I'm looking at this draft, so the maintain or decrease total expenditure per pupil, we just now amended to this quartile construct, right?
Yeah.
And we'd be moving it.
Be moving it to benchmark seven.
To benchmark seven.
Got it, okay. And then you'd slot this Affordable Care Act one kind of in its place?
Yeah. If the board wants, if so chooses.
If you think of that as a compliance issue...
Yeah.
Everything else that's currently on there, and it's been on there in the past, is to me is...
Then it fits there, but are there other compliance things that we're not calling out? I mean, we're workers' comp, I mean, it seems, it seems out to just...
You should have a choice not to do that.
Right.
So I don't know how you'd ever fail it.
No. What are you saying?
To put it in there is, it's like saying, I'm not going to break the law, what do you mean?
Right. So what else, should we have five other bullets that say we're going to do the workers' company?
We're going to make sure our workers' comp is paid.
We're going to do payroll taxes correctly, we're going to call that out specifically just because it's new, or what's your rationale for...
Rationale is because it's, you know, CIP is high, is stuff that goes on and off. It's a current benchmark, so we would hopefully meet that as we go into this next year and the year following, so we don't get penalized. It could, the penalty is a big, it's monetarily, quantitatively, a big number, potentially, so that's something you want to stay out in front of, and it's part of an improvement process. And what it does, it also involves not just my department, it involves HR.
Sure.
Business operations. So it is an entity wide, to be able to meet that involves more than just one department. So that was, that was a suggestion, if we wanted to replace something on there, that would be the only other recommended...
Yeah, I actually prefer to take some off versus adding more on, because we already have a lot of elements in here.
I just, I don't want all the...
Not just in this benchmark, but it'd be just, in aggregate, there's a lot of benchmark pieces.
That's fine.
So I prefer not to add.
I mean, we're going to be on it regardless, anyways, like you said.
Yeah, that's kind of like an everyday job you're going to do.
Well, we do, if it's not on here, it definitely has to be on the strategic timeline, because it must be.
Well, the treasurer's objectives.
Yes.
Yeah.
And, yeah, part of that objective piece of evaluation.
I think it fits better than...
Because the other one I was thinking of in this financial management piece, this financial management benchmark, be something about oversight and support of the affiliate organizations, because in my mind, that's probably where some of our largest financial management exposure resides.
Well, that's...
But, so as I say that, though, it's a little bit, that would be somewhat covered in the unqualified audit, but not...
When you say affiliate organizations, you mean your boosters and PTOs?
Recognize the ones that we recognized at the beginning of the year, and that's why I'm saying, support and oversight, it's just, if those are the right words, it's guidance and counsel, because it's not...
Guidance and counsel is probably better.
Develop a professional development program for our...
We don't want to show responsibility if the PTO goes belly...
Develop a professional development program for our support organizations.
Yes.
Or related organizations.
Yes.
Now, again, that's, do you want that on your CIP, do you want that as part of the evaluation system and strategic timeline? Or all three?
Maybe for this year, put it on, because it'll be a new...
It's definitely needed.
...goal to hit. I was thinking out loud.
Well, I just, I like the statement, more is less, and, I mean, less is more, they're opposite. And I don't like adding stuff that sound more specific to me, that this is how we operate, how this administration operates. So isn't it already covered with the general language of the CIP?
Or I think it may better, it may be better served on objectives or the timeline.
Yeah, yeah, I agree, yeah, there you go.
Because it's not even really a benchmark, I mean, is that a pass/fail?
True.
Well, it's, in my mind, it's creating a culture of appropriate financial management. So it is, in my mind, it is broader than a one-year objective, it's not just launching a course, teaching it once, and saying, check the box, I'm done. It is about ingraining the right culture across the district. But to get it up and running, I'm fine with starting it on the timeline objective.
The thing to remember, again, that those are, you know, they would fall outside the audit, because they are separate legal organizations, so you're probably right leaving it off the CIP part of the process, but yes, that is a good goal.
Did we already keep that bond rating, even though?
Yes.
Yeah, keeping that on.
We're keeping that on there. Yeah, I think it needs to stay on there.
It needs to.
So we're down to three then for the six?
Yes.
That's good.
The top three.
Which is okay.
That's good.
All right.
That's fine.
Then why don't you repeat those three for six? If you could just read them real quick, rephrase them.
Yeah. Let me go ahead and do that. Benchmark six, responsible financial management, obtain annual GFOA, award for excellence in financial reporting for the district's CAFR. That is, just to give you a background, the CAFR is a GAAP basis financial statement. We normally operate on a five-year forecast and everything on a cash basis. It's just a report, GFOA has a, an award program that they have, very strict, it's going through a few, three or four reviewers, and they judge our, our reporting of the CAFR, which is a very important thing when it comes to the bond rating. When you go into step number two here, is maintain or increase the district's bond When you go into step number two here is maintain or increase the district's bond rating with Moody's and standards and pores, a CAFER's, districts that prepare CAFER's, it looks upon very favorably with Moody's and S&amp;P, along with very, other variables along with that. And then three, receive a successful unqualified audit with fewer than five minor compliance citations. Unqualified means is the best kind of audit you want.
Yeah, I think it is a very global statement. See, I like that, I wanted to make sure that was still there.
Yeah, yeah, the unqualified is a clean audit and five minor compliance citations.
So if you characterize the bucket, you get finished reporting, so good transparency, bond ratings, you get financial strength, and audits, you have good compliance and controls. So like, three main categories, a good finish.
Yeah, the only thing you may want to add is five minor internal control or compliance citations.
Yeah.
It's a separate report act, just knowing from the structure.
Okay. Any others there? Do we have any other edits then?
So we have, we have three for six and then we'll have...
Let's go on, move on to seven.
So resource allocation utilization?
We'll actually have four for seven. If you want to break the one in the handout that I had, if you want to keep those as one bullet point, or you want to keep those as two separate bullet points, I'm probably guessing one, two, let's keep it in the same, but maybe not.
I think it's an either or.
Okay.
We need to do one or the other, but not both on the two edits. Don't they kind of do the same thing?
It's all part of, I mean, if you look at this thing, it's in the same paragraph. They talk about total per pupil and they also talk about, it's actually two separate ones. You have the total per pupil, then you also have non-classroom versus classroom instructional. So it is two separate type things, so I don't know if you want to...
I'd like to keep it at the higher level.
So combine into one?
The all, in the all-in number versus, just focus on just classroom, that we couldn't miss spending outside the classroom.
Okay.
In my mind, we're responsible for both.
But are they going to publish lists with...
It'll have both.
It'll have both.
So we want to keep both, but keep it underneath one bullet point?
Yeah.
I think you're saying you just want to...
I just want like the 9,600 one.
You just want total?
Total.
Okay. If, if I have consensus.
Yeah, because it's, if you add the two together, this is what it's going to get. Might as well have the total.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we'll stay, so we will stay at three under, under benchmark seven. And the overall pupil certified to fifteen and a half to one, we all agree to that.
Is that going to, just when you're talking about how they're splitting it on a cost per pupil with instructor, are they changing, because this has, is everybody all in, right? So includes librarians and is that going to be measured differently on the state level now?
Well, like I mentioned before, now this is a certified type basis. I don't think that will be, that will change that much as far as certified, but like I was saying, for maybe some of your classified folks, if they're, it, it's a change in the fact that if, they may have been coded one way or another, this way, now with the interpretation that they've, ODE has put out, their instruction now, they may have been a supporter, which was called, and previously called a support position, is now called, will be a classroom position, instructional position, because they are with a child.
But they're not a certified person, so they're not included in the student teacher ratio.
Yes.
Because our ratio included them before.
Yeah.
No, librarians are certified and gifted are certified. Art teachers are certified, yeah.
I didn't know that, my parents were sure.
Yeah.
Didn't we get a, an expenditure per pupil and how many dollars go into the classroom, addressing specifically what you said, moving people over? And there were districts that were, they called them, for example, seventy thirty districts and sixty forties. It just seems to me like I saw that table just within the past week, that it kind of addressed this expenditure per pupil and percentage of dollars going to the classroom.
I hadn't seen anything this way, but that's something I can research too.
I forget who that may have been sent to us by the alliance.
That's something I...
You know, as, as we were going through the budget and...
Alliance for echo refunding or whatever it is.
Right.
Yeah, I don't usually get those.
Kind of simulation and where you would fall. And, and that would kind of fit that whole formula of how, you know, are you a seventy thirty, meaning what percentage of your dollar amount goes directly to the classroom?
The thing with this expenditure standards, it's, it's very, it's called USAS coding. So they have a coding structure and those positions fall underneath there. And there's really, that's, it's kind of well, somewhat well-defined in that aspect that, you know, that's why we have thirty-six numbers in our account codes, but it defines those, so they, they pull those up into instruction. There's a thing, if you call, if you look at this thing, this thing called a crosswalk, they'll show you what, it's called a function, and it falls into those functions, such as library or special education and stuff like that. And it'll show you what's instructional, what's not instructional. It's called kind of a crosswalk, is what they've called it. So it's kind of well-defined, what it is, you really can't move in and out there, because they, a librarian is a librarian to them, a, a, you know, an OT or a PT is a...
So I guess the question is for the board, right? Do we want to set the benchmark on just the classroom instructional ratio or the all-in instructional spending ratio, right? Or both? And we, we had done it in the past with the all-in number, which I was uncomfortable with.
I agree too.
I don't know, the state tends to be leaning more toward educating the public on the money in the classroom versus the money outside the classroom to show efficiencies. So I would hate to leave that part out, because I have a feeling the legislature is really going to be looking at that as well.
We can show both?
Yeah.
Dr. Lucas, kind of, would it be though, this ratio, those, that's kind of what you guys use as part of the staffing plan.
Right.
Right.
So that's why, I think that's where that ratio is coming from and that goal is part of the staffing plan type situation. So that's why maybe the overall...
Contract.
That, that, that one's not.
Okay, that one's not.
The twenty-five and twenty-four to one is.
Yeah.
Yeah, yes.
That was the, this is the one we just gradually bump up to save, you know, you bump that one, you save a million.
Right.
Oh yeah, it's a lot of leverage there.
Right.
I think one point on that ratio is about a building.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll do both?
Yeah.
Agree with that? So now we will have four under seven, up there?
So how would you, so you have a ratio for, maybe I'm confused here then. So you keep that ratio one?
Fifteen and a half to one.
And that's all in certified? Yes.
Because that's what we publish at the bottom of the forecast.
Forecast, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, it's specifically spelled out in there.
Yeah.
You have the overall efficiency by examining the need, whatever.
You would layer in these two that you have here.
And then layer these, the two side cases. So we do want a separate one.
Okay.
We're jumping around there, like, oh, are we still talking about ratios and how we're going to do that?
Well, and I guess even under seven, this is one we're, we still haven't defined, right? We, overall efficiency by examining need, actually maintenance, cost of facilities as a benchmark against industry standard.
That's, that's one that...
I'll go back.
If I recall...
That's the previous director of facilities.
Yes.
We said we were really going to define that as we move forward.
It is the debate over, not the debate, but the issue was, how do we know we're, I guess two things, actively investing in maintenance of the facilities on the capital side and/or are we building, buildings at the necessary cost? I guess with, with building on the decline, I don't know if we need that one anymore. Because in essence, we've moved the two spending per pupil ratios out of financial management into resource allocation. This is really just another resource allocation one, but doesn't, it doesn't answer the question still.
How much should it cost to...
Right, is it a hundred bucks a square foot to maintain a building at fifty bucks a square foot? We don't know. And that was, the intent was to develop that benchmark, so what's, what are other just expect?
And we couldn't really do industry standard, because buildings in Alatanji are different than the buildings in Worthington.
You only have one measure gauge by, and that's, well, they changed their acronym, but the former Ohio Schools.
Facilities Commission.
Commission, that's the only benchmark you have, and it's statewide.
If you take the industry standard out of that statement, that was really the work of, a lot of the work of Project 2020. Achieve overall efficiency by what, it's not as much as industry standards, but more educational trends.
I'm okay with that, because it's hard to measure the industry, because it changes too.
Right.
It's too bald.
I don't know that it's measurable.
I'm not sure it is. It's, it's more of a, it's more of a study of...
It's a, it's a, it's a point in time, because there's too many variables.
Yes.
So how do you measure?
We have one bad winter.
Yeah.
A tornado comes through.
Well, the first, the very first part of the sentence.
What happened to Texas?
Examining the need. Examining the need. We talked about that, okay? Achieve overall efficiency by examining the need.
So you're saying that's what will happen by implementation of some suggestions from 2020?
That's correct. In other words, do we need to continue to build? And we've always said, our dilemma is, how do we keep growing and stop building?
I don't know that you can eliminate a reference to continue to build. Some day we're going to, may, may have to build. When we get to have that next one.
Right.
A lot of what ifs.
But I guess getting back, that, we put that in there and I, as you recall, there was a discussion, we went around and around and it always came back to, how do we measure that? And we, we could never answer that question. How do we measure? I don't know. Because I know fifteen years from now, it's not going to be the way it is now.
And we really can't benchmark against Ohio School Facilities Commission, because, because we build our buildings cheaper.
We build our buildings cheaper, we always have. That's the only, that's the only measurable, let's call it that.
Right, because they do have the set standards, right.
But that's not all the tangi.
So I guess the, assessing the district's capability in managing spending, I guess would be captured in this first one of the two new ratios, right?
No.
It's a capital, it's a capital...
Capital improvement spending would be in there.
There's not, it's not involved in the per pupil.
This is just pure...
You almost have to go back to what 2020 said, I don't know what page that is, but what you were saying about 2020 statement.
See, I don't think 2020 was intended for this.
When I, when I look at benchmark seven, resource allocation and utilization, that balance fiscal responsibility as they support student achievement, that's not totally about building. That's about, we have, we have this much money and there are educational trends, and how do we take the money that we have to provide the highest quality of education at the most efficient cost? If we can do it better with laptops instead of building buildings, we should be doing laptops instead of building buildings. That's millions of dollars versus, versus hundreds of thousands of dollars. And I think when we, when we started talking about this, that this specific bullet, it was geared toward building, but now it's kind of, well, it's...
Well, they're part of our resources. I mean, we're just trying to, on all the bases on facilities is part of our resources. And managing them well by, it may be maintenance and upkeep to keep from having to completely replace the roof. So I don't, I don't think we're disagreeing that it should be included, it's just measured against what.
Right.
And to whoever just made that point, it is somewhat to the point of, are we fiscally, responsibly have the lowest cost per, even though facilities technically aren't in it, that cost per pupil is, is what we're measured against.
Right.
And just for clarification, the reason facilities and capital isn't in there is because districts are so different, you know? Because we, we get that a lot, if you...
Right now, we spend a million dollars a year on capital improvements.
Right.
It's somewhat an arbitrary number.
Yeah, right, Hilliard is three million.
Yeah. And that's what we try to do, should we be age-adjusting the capital improvement budget based upon, you know, the age of the stock of the building?
Sure.
So for us, it should be lower, but at some point it's going to start creeping up.
Right.
And how do you prepare for that?
But in the meantime, while we're making all those plans, the actual delivery models and trends are changing.
Right, right.
Which, like, I get here four and a half years ago, there was a call for four or five high schools, six middle schools, and that, not only has the, what's changed that trend is the educational delivery model too, that, you know, we just don't keep building. I mean, we can, but...
The question is, how do you capture that in the bullet? How do you capture that concept?
Yeah, I think that's what we always struggle with. How do we write that down? How do you measure that?
I mean, if you say achieve the overall efficiency, okay, we're efficient, you know? But it's a judgmental thing.
You can't lose, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I want to make sure the statement as it's written. What's the statement, just read it for me, so I make sure I'm in the right place. What's the statement?
Achieve overall efficiency by examining the need, adequacy, maintenance and cost of facilities as benchmarked against industry.
I have to make sure I'm in the right place.
Yeah.
Thanks.
And, and my comment originally was, instead of saying industry standards, would you say educational trends?
You could say that.
Because, or, or you take it out completely.
But then how do you measure that?
That's what...
Yeah, take out the...
Or you take it out completely, which is why I originally said...
I don't think it's going to come out.
I do too.
It's not measurable, it can't be a...
Get rid of the measuring part of it.
Well...
No, I say get rid of it, because you can't, everything on the CIP, you can say, yes, we achieved it, or no, we didn't. This is arbitrary.
Right, I agree. Because we, we bounced around for forty-five minutes last year and said, we need to have...
We said we need to have discussion on how to measure it.
And we still can't define it.
I would take it out.
I agree. So we're back to three under benchmark seven.
It's an interim process.
Can we move on to eight?
Yes, please. Benchmark eight is the community survey responses? So this is as amended, right? What's on the screen here?
This is as...
As proposed?
Yes, as it was last year.
Oh, this is as it was last year?
Yes, and I believe, we made the comment, the revision piece was, we really need to define this better.
Take it out if we're not going to do it annually, or define it if we are going to live it, leave it in.
Yes, because we said, if, if the community survey is a benchmark to compare, equal or surpass the previous year, and you do it every eighteen months instead of every year, you can't compare it.
Yeah.
So the question was, do we do the, we either throw it out or we do the survey every year to have a benchmark.
Yeah, well, I mean, the survey doesn't change that much of a year-to-year basis, does it?
Well, I think everyone has received a copy of the latest survey we did.
Yeah, we've got it.
Yeah, I've got the file.
There are probably out of 25 questions, maybe eight that never change. So we haven't turned over years. But this latest one, for example, was about online and doing enrollment. One before that was probably levy.
I mean, the intent of the benchmark is just to, in essence, assess community satisfaction.
Correct.
Right?
Yes.
I guess we deem the survey as the best way to do that?
Yes.
Are there other things we should be thinking of?
I think we can do other things, but I'm not sure that it will measure the entire community because the FOUND survey not only takes into account parents, Olandangie students, but also non-parents.
Like Adam wanted to only poll parents.
I like the idea of doing it every year.
I like the idea of doing.
Rablun and take that off.
$15,000.
And actually, you hate to change companies only because then you get in.
No, you want the year-over-year track. I mean, it's easier to say, well, the results aren't really changing that much. But if you wait and do it every three years, which some companies try to do, it's too, that you've lost too much in that three years.
Rasmussen does it every day. I keep the Rasmussen report every day on different.
Online, two years ago. Exactly. I think that's something that, that we used, the results of that survey in regard to online doing enrollment, that, that was a definite yes for the community of.
That's what.
So I'll support it even more if you.
I like the one year too, especially when, what, 2020 came. You know, the whole reason for 2020, that the trends are so, there's so much happening. And they're just, and I, and I just know from experience from even the previous board that I joined, that the FOUND reports were, were right on target from what I've seen happening.
Well, also with the changes in education at the state level, you know.
Well, you know, the next survey, you know, I mean, it's already set, Common Core questions.
The state academic standards.
Yeah. I just, I just think we're going to have it.
State academic standards.
The state academic standards, it's not Common Core, it's the state academic standards. I can explain the devil language. It is the state academic standards.
Reframing that. I, I would, because I don't want to take it off. And we have to take it off if we're not going to do it every year. So I don't want to take it off because it's an important part of whether or not we're successful as.
I think it's important to listen to the taxpayers.
So I agree. So how do we rewrite the objective then?
I think the first one can stay.
But surpass it how? Is it a certain, it doesn't give you like an index score.
Yeah. Well, we can say out of these 20 questions, you know, we surpassed eight.
That's what I want. It's a little more specific. I don't know what the survey results will equal or surpass. You need to define which questions.
Well, it's the number in the.
Yeah, because not every question's going to be the same.
No, because they change every year. Does it box?
Based on the bucket that are the same.
Right. You have to realize this. Well, I think some of the questions.
Because like the online, online instructional program question, we wouldn't, I don't know that we would ask it again.
I benchmark that every year.
Yeah.
It would be right direction, wrong track.
Yeah.
What's the percentage?
So say core questions.
Right.
Will, you know.
Q 12.
The Q 12. We're engagement voting.
Total positive rating versus total negative rating.
Right. And I don't know, you get that specific, but you can just call out survey results from common questions.
Yes.
Right.
From continuous, I'm sure there's, I'm sure Fallon has a word for it that's.
And is there?
I guarantee it's.
So asking what that word is, what those core are called, the Q 12.
I might not know what that word is, but.
But he'll have information with that word in there. Because everyone calls them different.
But we're doing our job according to the community, like you said, you know. What's the community think? And that's what you're trying to achieve. So like.
So the second one, the CIC, does that exist?
Does that exist?
And the Family and Civic Engagement Team, does that exist? So let's just do the one bullet on the core questions.
Do we want to get more specific on what we're measuring there, correct?
Yeah, so I would redo that bullet to be more specific around the common set of questions.
And I would try to hit it the same time every year, you know, this week in February.
What do we think about adding a benchmark around? Not coffee chats, but the, the conversations we do, you know, that there's open dialogue between the board.
Well, like this year, we added the open dialogue.
Right. I'm saying to have a second bullet instead of.
That deals with community engagement?
Yeah.
Which is an objective for him, the superintendent, for the superintendent.
To equal or surpass the previous year.
Yeah, I just feel like to Kevin's point, what else do we use to measure that besides the survey? Community engagement is, I mean, you can go the negative and say that we don't receive complaints. That's not going to be a way we want to approach it. But, or that we're fostering open dialogue between.
Do you get to count every time someone stops you in Meyer?
Yeah. Look back to the culture.
Or the basketball game.
Anyway, the culture of.
Yeah, yes.
I don't know how many people know how many coffee chats, you know, or how many, you know. So it's board and administration. I, I don't know how to phrase it, but I feel like there should be more than one bullet if it's.
Community outreach.
Yeah, I agree.
It's, so if we're going on that path, the actual benchmark needs to be rewritten. Because it's not just community survey responses anymore, it's more about community engagement.
Right.
Community engagement should remain high. And then evidence of that would be the surveys and other things.
Yes. Good call.
So again, you'll take lead on drafting that language, getting back to us. We can consider, okay.
Pizza smells good.
Okay.
Any.
That's a good one.
So is that all for the edits on CIP? Although, do we have a special education issue? We wanted to make sure that in here or.
We, that's on a strategic timeline.
Strategic timeline, okay. I just don't want to forget that.
Well, is there any place for it in Benchmark 5? I don't know.
No, there's, was it somewhere else where we talked about all students or something like that? Under three, there's the meet annual measure objectives for all subgroups in reading math.
Yeah, that's, that covers it.
That's right, okay.
Good.
Yep.
And, oh, it's in Benchmark 2, Students with Disabilities.
Oh, there you go. Yeah, okay. Perfect.
These are all written pertaining to the new state standards.
Otherwise known as.
Otherwise known, okay.
All right, so the CIP?
Yeah, good job.
Let's take a break. All right, you would keep going? So now we move to Agenda Item 6, number one, that finalize the timeline.
I think today's.
Exhibit B?
Yeah, so we may talk about the timeline. There's other people which may play into other things we want to put on that one. Or do you want to review it first and then?
Uh, let's review it first and see what goes.
Yes.
All right.
You want to walk us through it?
By the way, I have added during the discussion, two things to the finance piece on the timeline, of which we'll, we'll bring back obviously, it's already with the edits. PD for support groups on finance piece and also implementation of the Affordable Care Act. So just to kind of give you an overview of the strategic timeline, we've broken the organization down into probably 15 different, 10, 15 different topics. As you can see, the majority of the first page would be academic initiatives, local and state government, communications. And if you look at the second page, it goes down through facility, finance, finance and negotiations, levies, community initiatives, staffing transitions, annual staffing, technology and transportation. And I think this originally started with probably 20, but we continued to consolidate. And I think two goals here, one, if we consolidate even further, that would be, oftentimes when you get fresh eyes looking at this, we probably review this at least twice a month, if not three or four times. So getting fresh eyes looking at it. Number two, what's not in that strategic timeline as part of our strategic planning that should be? And I think that's the part that ties into the 2020 report. A lot of things in the 2020 report is already on here. Because that's kind of what started this whole document. So, but again, if there is something, an initiative that we've left out, I think from last night's conversation, we talked a little bit about, you know, the special education piece. Also see the full implementation of Common Core needs to be reworded.
The state academic standards, of which Common Core is a piece because it's only English and math.
That's, luckily, we caught that too.
It's like a grammar error.
New report card, that's actually the new district report card. I want somebody to get this document, I think all the kids are getting new report cards.
Right, it's a new state report card from, of how the district is doing, not how your child.
So we probably need to put new state report card.
So then would the goal be at work sessions or meetings? We be updated on everything in 20?
This starts the, yeah, this is the feed into the agenda topic for the board meeting? As you click through, kind of making progress against these things?
Yeah.
Under, I don't know if you want to put this under local, state government or even communications? I don't, that new group that you want to start for the local government group? And, you know, I was thinking last night, is it a new group? Or is it a evolution of this School Funding and Action Committee?
And that's probably a good work session topic too. More broadly speaking, the whole governance and committee structure?
Yes.
Because we've had this discussion about the development committee continues to evolve as, as the district evolves. And then do we need a strategic planning committee that would also participate in and opine on these kinds of documents? And at some point, those, there's a view that those two would come together, the development committee and some kind of strategic planning committee.
Right.
Subgroup of it. So we should probably allocate some time.
Sooner rather than later.
Yeah, maybe in August or September work session.
To look at the board committee structure.
Yeah.
Okay.
You have your committees and sure, that's fine. It's, what fees do we have?
Right.
Given how we've changed.
Because I think you were thinking that the, this advocacy group, what I would call it, would fall under the superintendent, but maybe it could be a joint. I don't know.
Yeah.
I would call it an advocacy group, the advocating owner.
Yeah, and it probably is, very much goes hand in hand with the school funding.
Yeah.
Which, you know, we've had conversations, that's no longer school funding, it's more legislative.
Yeah.
Action group. So it would tie in very well.
You know, and bringing Brian on, maybe he has some new ideas for the finance and accounting. You know, to keep them, instead of meeting twice a year, not to give them any more work, but is there something else that they could be doing?
Because the efficiency is a super tenancy.
Is there anything we need to add on the, I don't know if it's under community initiatives on the, on the back around safety?
Oh.
Because we've got the drug task force, which I'd like to see called out, but I think safety is going to be a huge.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, Alice training, training.
Something you did in 1213, right? So.
Yeah.
Alice started.
But it's a continuation.
Adding new resource officers, all those things.
Yeah, yeah.
And there may be bigger things we just have to do.
We just got that new program that.
Yes.
The, our.
Ties into the.
Police and farm and fire can see the building.
I didn't notice the. Middle school, high school, or district, anything?
I think that.
That's coming up. Might as well get ready for it.
Actually, alls you have to do is look at the latest attendance report that we got. And you see that 1,800 students at Liberty is projected for August. And then Orange and an Olandangie seem to be closer than around the 1,400 range. But that's a big difference. 400 students is a big difference. And then you've got Shanahan that's pushing it, going to push it.
Yeah, we should, yeah.
The other.
And the whole split middles.
Yes, the split middles.
Well, even going further, the split elementaries is where it starts. Because, for example, the Chester piece, that's where that conversation started. So we're going to have to fix it all the way through.
The other thing I would alter the language on is under staff transition, the building administrator. Alternative education building administrator. Because that's, I don't know what it will be. It's the single sign on pilot?
Yeah, for the, for the website, so that you don't have to go to one website to pay your fees and another website to get your grades. And I still have not figured out what my daughter's final GPA is because in one area, it's one thing, and on the other area, it's something else.
Yeah, I don't even know my login for one Olandangie, but I know whatever the.
Yes, it's incredibly frustrating.
GPA, but then there's a third one.
Yeah.
Where you can go to grades.
Resource, yeah, there's, well, there's MyOlandangie and then there's the.
The other one.
Power School.
Power School.
That's the one I had to get into. MyOlandangie, they gave you that login when you were like in elementary school or something. They're like, if you don't know your login, I'm like.
In one of them.
In 10 years, I don't know my login.
One of them, you can see the grades on a daily basis.
Well, one of them, so Power School is the one hooked into what the teacher.
Yeah, and then the other one, you just, you get the report card? Well, why can't I see the report card?
I don't even know what one Olandangie is. I mean, I haven't looked at it since second grade, so. But Power School was, is one of the most powerful.
Since your kids were in second grade.
Since my children were in second grade. No, but I think even, I think not a lot of parents understand that.
Right, what's the difference?
But also know the usefulness. I mean, I, I've talked to parents who are complaining about their kids and, oh, she never has homework. And I'm like, here, call up and get a login for this if you haven't ever done it. And literally, they said change the course of their year with their student in high school to go, oh, well, now I see.
Yeah.
He said he did fine and he got an F.
Right, and then when they get their interims, they're not surprised.
Not surprised, so.
You guys taking this in?
Sorry. I couldn't.
What is public participation?
Speak up.
If you could just tell me my daughter's final GPA, I would be fine.
Mike, when I'll be sending out that communication, by the way.
And how big a pilot is it?
So it's not, it's not a pilot. It's, it's an enterprise system, so we have a lot of different systems. So I'm, what, 90 is in this? So we have a lot of disparate individual siloed systems. We get multiple audits. From what I can tell, there's no, there hasn't been a plan to really consolidate those or really strategically look at your enterprise. So what we've coined the term as single sign is really just truly your parent portal.
Yeah.
And that's what we're saying inside of the district now, it's just a parent portal.
You're going to only have portal on top?
Your grades, your reports, your forms, and things like that. So we are developing plans right now to effectively do the single sign on, coining it internally again, the parent portal. But it's a consolidation of all the enterprise systems, which will not take place in the next 30 days. We would, we want to get school open, we want to make sure the grade cards are there. So there's a plan in place to do that, but it's going to be over time. So whether it hits in the middle of the year or it's going to be the initiative for next year, it requires a lot more planning and thought that went into it previously. So we're taking a look at that entire infrastructure, so.
Well.
Give your name and quickly.
Oh, so, yeah, my name is Mike Testa, and I'm with the management group. So we're.
The group we just approved last night. The group we just approved last night.
I think I heard it.
The IT director spot there, so we work with.
Well, I think one of the continuing issues is Power School is incredibly powerful. And we only know more about it because we got it demoed, I saw it in three different demonstrations. Then partnering with communications, we don't communicate that well. And every time I see a thing that says, call your school to get your password, I go, in what world do I live that I can't forgot your password and click the button and go get my password? So, so there's lots of opportunity to communicate it better with parents.
Devin, did you have something to add?
Yeah, I think we were asking earlier, when that communication was going to go out?
Yes.
Tomorrow, the communications committee will give the news about the update on where we're at with the single sign on, as we were previously calling it. And then probably either Friday or Monday of next week, the PTO presidents, the building secretaries, letters will be going out, I'm sorry, emails will be going out to them at that point.
Parent portals are a much better name for it.
Because it's not a true single sign.
It's not a true single sign.
And I think people are staying the portal. So are you going to have like online forms, so Kevin doesn't have to fill out eight different?
Medical forms?
It's the only way I remember all their birthdays. I have to write them down 12 times.
I got, I learned early on.
Copy.
I made a copy, I made a copy of it. And then every time I needed to update something, I'd update it and sign it, but I had the copy filled out. But that's just ridiculous. But that comes from 12 years.
Those 13 and 14, online forms.
Oh, okay. That's the school year then.
Yeah.
Kevin, you might be in luck.
It'd be more likely to begin to 13, 14, what is it beginning, correct? It'll be better.
It'll be better.
Even online PDFs.
I love to even say easy. He's good at the spin. Can we, I'm sorry, back to the online course development?
Yes.
Is that, you're talking specifically about the classes and the development of those? Not the plan around how we're going to handle online learning?
Correct. That is, we've already, we have several of those already developed. And in fact, we taught them last year. So that would just be a continuation.
Continuation.
Yes.
More, getting more courses online, more teacher strength to handle that?
Yes. I want to make sure, because obviously the majority of this strategic timeline deals with academic initiatives, as it should, is what we do. I want to make sure we're not leaving out on that second page, things that are just kind of staring us right in the face and we say, oh, we never thought of that. I don't think there is, but, and again, we have August 8th to be able to revisit this. We'll come back with the edits that we have from tonight. And by that time, you can compare that Project 2020 report to the strategic timeline. But for the most part, we have gone through those areas and made sure they made it on the strategic timeline.
Yeah, I would say safety, and I'm interested from a district communications plan perspective, what that means? Because it technically needs to be there every year, but, so I'd want a little more flavor on what you mean.
When you say on the safety piece?
No, safety, I think we covered, the district communications plan? It's only listed under, so you're saying you've put together a strategy for how you're going to do one? Or you're strategically, because otherwise you've got to list it every year, you should have a new communications plan.
Okay.
Julie and I would be glad to.
Okay.
The other community initiative, is that worked in 13 and 14, implemented for 1415? Or is that determined in 1415?
That's when we're going to start that conversation.
The committee are determining if we need to do it.
It's going to be implemented in the following school.
So we're going to be reassembling our redistricting group in 1415. And again, we may come out of that and say, nothing needs to be done right now.
So this is, you know, ultimately going to be posted as an exhibit, probably redistricting analysis?
Yes, because people will say, we're redistricting next year!
Sixth grade now.
And people lose their heads over that.
Good point, very good.
Just like Julie just.
Yep.
Looks just like.
Yes.
You're elementary 16? No surprise to see that, I thought we were done.
It's out there, I mean, it's out there as far as we can go.
Yeah, I would, you know.
That's the preparation for it.
Three out of the last four years, the parade of homes is going, will be in our district. Next year, it'll be parade of homes in our, back in our district again. I'm seeing, if you, I drove through Big Bear, that were the little golf courses the other day. I could not believe the number of souls on those brand new homes. And so the market is picking up again, and where there's land was here.
Diagonally across from there is another golf village, at Rutherford.
Oh.
And it brought more to height than that.
You're talking about the Big Bear, Boffa Old State Road there?
Yes.
South of State, not Big Bear Farm.
Not Big Bear Farms, yeah, Little Bear.
Little Bear, actually.
Little Bear is the golf.
Yeah, by Oak Creek.
By the golf course, right. And then diagonally also, Rutherford, so there's been pretty good expansion.
The farm at Liberty is looking at the zoning for the farmland on 315 and Home Road that.
Across from Presbyterian Church.
Yes, across from the barn church. That is getting ready.
Multi, or Pete Edwards.
The northwest corner of our district is going to be developed, because you know, sewer.
You know where the barn church is?
It already is.
Pioneer days when our kids.
Yeah.
Form the board.
You know, we still have.
Because when does authorization expire, ever?
For that bond.
For that bond.
Just a more expensive bill, that's all.
That's all.
More expensive to build.
That's correct, that's correct.
Yeah, I thought after five years.
I thought after five years, it expired or something.
No, we checked into that, and it was, never.
Good, all right. You know, we still have the land off of.
Cheshire, well, north of Cheshire.
Well, that's for, that's the Cozy Farm.
Correct.
And then we have land on the west side for the elementary Bunny Station.
Bunny Station.
Yeah, the Cozy Farm is Berlin.
Yeah, that's a big site.
So, yeah.
There's a mountain up there.
All right, with those additions.
Yeah, just the first, that school has to show there, because it takes so long to prepare and build for it.
Well, right now on Bunny Station there, the proper utilities aren't there.
Yeah, they still remember you built, right?
Yeah.
They will be.
Is that the only land that we currently own that we haven't built on?
Well, Cozy.
Yeah, the Cozy property and.
As far as I hear, I couldn't, oh, yes.
Could you get us the acreage on that, on those properties?
Cozy is big enough for middle and a high.
Right, or a middle and an elementary, or whatever.
Combination, that's big enough to hold those two big buildings.
Right.
And where is that one?
Station. Well, with this, almost probably diagonally from here.
Close to here.
You go across the railroad tracks and it's.
Peach Blow, is it north of Peach Blow?
It's not far from 36, 37.
Right.
By the outlets.
The what?
By the outlets.
Both of them?
Local stakeout, we should probably put the budget cycle on here? Because every time.
Yes.
We go through a budget.
Yeah.
We go through a funding.
That's good, that's good.
All right, the budget cycle's on.
Yeah, so 15, 16.
Do you want it in 15, 16, or?
Or 14, 15, that's what I'm thinking. Yeah, after I said that, I'm like, oh, we should do.
Yeah, we need to start making our plans.
We do 14, 15.
Of attack.
Yeah.
That states that pupil services piece we talked about last night, to go on this document. What were you, were you thinking specifics, or were you thinking? An academic. Specifics as far as specific pupil services concerns?
Just on making sure how it ties into what we're getting rated on, you know, so the grades that we saw, we needed some areas on. And then, so not specific to a certain type, but making sure that we're keeping that focus on. And so what are we doing to move those grades up? Which I know they're not grades yet, but what are we doing to make sure those populations have a, maybe higher identification right now? So that we can make sure we're looking at them.
Yeah, focusing on the deficiencies, probably, and how pupil services are reacting or helping.
The identification of the need, and, and so how are we identifying those kids?
And then what's the plan going forward?
There's a real big push with early identification, earlier than, than we're probably catching them.
Well, I mean, that's our preschool program.
Yeah, so really making sure we're sure enough and paying some attention there, so that we're not. Because things like the third grade, I mean, a lot of these will play into it, the third grade guarantee.
Well, full implementation state standards, for example, references back to our benchmark 1 through 5, which talks about objectives, measurable objectives in math and reading for all subgroups. So it all ties in, but I want to make sure that we are addressing, that does address it, but you.
The reason I want it called out specifically is because we say maximum learn for all students. And then a lot of what we end up talking about is how many AP classes, how many we're doing. And, and, not that I don't think we give them the same education, but I think we just forget sometimes. And so that's, that's kind of my motivation, is to keep it front, so that we are getting updates and understanding, which will then trickle down and affect the scores and the.
And then conversely, I mean, they pulled this out of the state budget, but they've always talked about specific lending for gifted. But what are, what are we doing on the opposite side for the gifted? Because we hear from the gifted parents too, saying, we're not giving them enough, you know, we're not giving them enough. So not only with our, the specific groups that show up on this state report card, but I don't know if gifted is now, I don't even know if gifted is a, is one of those categories on the state report card? I don't know, I don't know.
Don't remember.
Yeah, I don't remember, but, you know, but, but all, I don't want to say classes, all.
Classifications.
Classifications of students, right, are the needs being met. And I know that there was a discussion, you know, should, should you finance something for a few to the detriment of more? And how do you balance that?
Now, the new report card does address, you know, students with disabilities, gifted.
Well, great, then we see the, we see what we score, so then they tell us, they tell us, okay, how we're identifying those students and what we're doing.
Right.
To make sure that we're serving their needs.
Again, I just want to make sure that if we don't write it, if it's not written on here, it doesn't mean it's not being paid attention to, because it's specifically in the new report card as part of the subgroups and our benchmarks, meaning that, okay, if, you know, if a building, for example, has an F in the subgroup of students with disabilities, that's, that's obviously not good, whether it's that, or gifted, or whatever it may be. But we will have access to those. We do have access to those.
But we don't know how they're being served, you know, could you educate us in our community more?
And I guess my question is, do you want that on a strategic timeline? And if you do, where does it go, what does it look like? Or what is, or what is it called? Does it, you know?
I can almost see when Jack would give us the update of the state report card. And then at the next meeting, you would bring in Mr. Andres.
Right, which we try to every year.
Yeah, okay, here's, is that what you think? Here's what new we're doing to identify and estimate needs. Here's, because we got this amount of data that we're going to put in place now, that we, and here's where we're going to go.
So just so I understand, when you're talking about the emphasis, the emphasis is more a report? Because all groups are addressed when we talk about full implementation of state standards. All groups across the board. So if, if those specifics do not show up on a strategic timeline, then that doesn't mean we're not targeting them. We bring Chris Anderson, you know, his pupil personnel report, as we do every year. Not maybe, he talks more right now about overview, maybe we want to look more at the academic piece, or how they're performing. Here's, here are the percentages, here's how they're performing in these buildings, here's what we're doing, or the intervention provided for the individuals that we need to move up. Does that address your concern, or doesn't?
I'm thinking.
Okay.
It just continues to come up from an objective standpoint. And, and calling it out to me makes it, just gives it heightened awareness. So when you talk about technology-based intervention program, so, I mean, I picture something like that from a pupil services, you know. What actual thing? And so maybe I don't know the words that will be on it, because I don't know what the plan is.
Okay.
So if you start to talk about what that strategy looks like, maybe it'd be easier to figure out how to quantify it. Because you're definitely doing something specific for that group.
Right.
And so I still stand on, I'd like it called out specifically in the strategic plan, what we're doing with that identified classification. And maybe that includes gifted, or, you know, if you use something as broad as classifications. But, but mine is.
Because you have to identify the gifted, just like you would identify.
So identification.
Yeah.
Well, right now, I'm just going to put down on here, subgroups, and talk to Jack and say, okay. We need to, it's not really an academic initiative as much as it is subgroups. Where does it go, does it go on the far left column, or does it go in, as just part of a, an initiative? But I'll let him bounce that around a little bit.
Yeah.
Because I know what you're saying, I want to make sure that we are capturing what you're saying on the strategic timeline.
Yeah, and I mean, this, my only other concern with this document in general is strategic planning. I mean, usually if this was happening at a company, you'd say you got too much here.
Oh, yeah.
You know, you, you figure out your, your big buckets, and then say, here's the strategies that underlie that. But there's usually four or five.
Right.
And so.
I think that's the same conversation they've had at the department.
Yeah, so whether there's a way that you say, okay, we've covered that in some of these others to groom these? And say, these are the four big strategic plans, here's the subs of those.
Correct.
So figure out a way to bucket this down. Because you look at this now and go, really, that's all we did was.
Well, it's also a timeline, since that, you deal with specificity at different years.
Yeah.
Well, and the other part, some of it is mandated. A lot of it, from an academic standpoint, is mandated. You really don't have a choice, you can't say, we really don't want to do that.
Yeah.
But, so online course development to me isn't really a strategy.
Right.
It's a tactic you're using to fulfill your strategy of something else. So there's things on here, online course development, I mean, that's a task.
Yeah.
That's not a strategy that you're focusing on.
These are individual, these aren't individual strategies, these are activities that support.
It's the timeline, it's the operative word.
Objectives of the district, right?
Right. And so figuring out, when it's called a strategic timeline, I mean, that's, that's just, I think, where we're getting a little, or I'm getting a little stuck.
I agree, they're not, some of these.
Yeah, but if you look at the far left, like, if you're, if you're making this look like a real strategic plan, the academic initiatives would be it. And then here are the steps that you're using to get there.
That's correct. Well, it's a timeline of implementing the CIP. I mean, how do you get the CIP implemented down to the classroom?
Because that's your strategy.
There it is, here it is.
Okay.
So it seemed like understaffing, the professional development focus of each year within a line to the academic initiatives?
Yes.
Either the development be. Either the development will be in the year ahead of the implementation of these things or-
Correct.
That would be sequenced out?
Yes.
So that the professional staff would be ready to implement the new academic initiatives?
Correct.
I'm glad you have a reference there, the PI for this index.
And also keep in mind, some of the things on this strategic timeline are on here only because annual staffing, for example. Late August, discuss personnel needs as a reminder for everyone in DLT that, okay, staffing's coming up. And this all ties up to the one right above it, staffing and transition. We're going to have this conversation at HR because sometimes when you have the turnover and newbies coming in, they'll say, I wanted to add this position. Well, too late, you missed the conversation. So we put, some of those things we put on there just to cue everybody in, okay, this is for your planning purposes, we're going to be having this conversation in August, every August. So if you have positions that you feel you need, that's when this takes place. It doesn't take place in March.
And it's for the next year.
And on the flip side, someone's going to be assessing the positions that we no longer need.
Correct.
Right, and the efficiencies that would affect the staffing model and-
That's the conversation, yes.
And so I guess the stuff above it, OSU Building Administrator, did we cover that one already?
I would take that out.
I said, yeah, I'd say I'd change.
We'd call it OSU Building Administrator, but it would be the-
Alternatives.
Maybe use a different one, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I said.
And middle school assistant principals, would that be the elimination of?
That would be the reallocation. And by reallocation, I mean, that would address the, for example, the Shanahan thousand student versus the, say, Hyatt's 700. And does one have an assistant or do you need additional or do you move one over? Because they're not all the same.
That's just level.
And how are we going to talk about, well, I guess, well, obviously it's a board discussion, but your reference there, operating in performance, I mean, permanent improvement plan, I keep wanting to say performance index, permanent improvement plan, under levy, under-
That's permanent proven?
Yeah, permanent proven.
Yeah.
So you're saying that's when you're going to have a discussion? I mean, we have to have that discussion about-
Well, above it in the facility in 14 and 15, you'd have a capital improvement plan funding? And then next year, you'd go out and raise the money?
Yeah.
If that's true.
I think that's a very important discussion.
I think what we're saying right there is, you know, we've always gone with a bond issue. No new millions with an operating levy. Should the next conversation, instead of saying bond issue, should it be permanent proven? Because we're now at the point where our buildings are, you know, 20, 15. All of a sudden, you're going to need more than a million dollars to keep them going.
And you're right, in 14, you're really going to start, Kevin was just saying, 14.
Right.
Really start ramping up that conversation.
Somewhere out there, we need to address this PI piece. Anything else? And again, we'll come back with the new edits, August 8th, and between now and then, if there's anything we need to address, just put it on the August 8th discussion.
I like this view, it's a good way to look at how things are coming through and how it shaped those dialogues. I think it's a good document to have, so I think it's really-
Yeah, it's great.
Good work.
Thank you.
Thank you. So with that broad discussion, could we cover two and three sufficiently for everybody? Which would be making sure 2020 ties to this document?
Yep.
And the findings of 2020 and also the personal training? Or do you want to say something else about personal training?
Well, I think, again, in conversations that we've had, I think I have a better understanding of what you need there in regard to not just, you know, central office training, but the whole administrative piece. So more of a periodic update that specifically addresses elementary, middle school, high school, central office, who's doing what and how with a pretty consistent update. So and that even ties into the next one, evaluation objectives, that's part of my-
I agree, and it's something, I like this to take forward, I think that's where the benefit. Because let's say there's superintendent tomorrow at 4 o'clock.
Right.
What do we know about this person or that person in this position?
Correct.
Are we done with item six? I believe we are. Good, item seven, superintendent objectives for 13 and 14. So I guess we can do this a couple ways. We can start with the document we worked on last night and try to go through and edit how we might change that given what we just covered in the timeline. In terms of how does the timeline, how do your objectives entide to achieving what we just identified, you know, given the timeline for significant activities for 13 and 14? Does everyone have that document from last night, objectives?
No, I don't have that. What, we passed out, what you passed out?
Yeah, I think I have the extra copy.
I thought you collected all those because you were going to write-
Yeah, I'll give you this copy, it's got-
Because you collected it so that you could-
Somebody's notes on it, so I need that one back.
Or would it be better to get you the updated strategic timeline? Allow you time to compare what we have to-
The objectives, that's fine.
To objectives to August 8th, say, okay, now, I will throw this out, September 29th, something like that. So we do have some time. And I don't think those objectives are going to change a whole lot, we're going to tie them to the CIP.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to hear your objectives to our discussion that we had last night. Does that make sense?
So more of, well, you take a first crack at how you might want to change your objectives.
Yes, correct, yes.
I agree with that.
And while I'm doing that, I also provide you with the updated strategic timeline so that-
Because that's a visual.
Yeah.
It ties to the complex.
So I'll take the first stab at that.
We also need to set treasurer's objectives. Obviously not tonight, but we'll start taking a draft of that.
Do you have the form?
I do not, I need to get that. Does Linda have that?
Probably, if anybody would have, it'd be her.
Okay.
Do you want to ex-
We decided what I'm going to do. We made a decision.
So I think we decided was, Dr. Lucas, we'll go through an update to strategic timeline based upon the discussion we just had. In addition, the discussion we had last night on his objectives, come back at, probably the late August session or the-
Or we can even provide that as the only statement.
With a proposed set of objectives for next year for 13, 14 that we can then consider and then work our way through.
That sounds like a plan.
And in the interim, we'll probably try to do the same for the treasurer.
Right.
We're going to get a course set from Linda and we'll start to work through what those might look like. And then try to get those resolved in August as well. So we'll have our two sets of objectives done actually before the screener starts.
Do we feel comfortable enough to take action on August 8th work session for the CIP? To make this official that we did today? Do we feel comfortable enough about the changes we made to CIP this evening to take action on August 8th even though it is a work session?
I think if you get it to us ahead of time.
Yeah, if we get the stuff ahead of time.
Okay.
Thing have published.
Yeah. But that's a board dialogue night anyway, so we'll get public participation.
That's fine.
Yeah, okay.
Just randomly bringing this up, but the board dialogue, I do want to talk more about the structure of that. And the first one had 20 people at it, the one had four. And if it's continually going to be that, you know, what-
Well, it's the same people.
And it's, yeah. Who come to every meeting.
Who come to every meeting anyway.
Maybe goes back to the communication plan, do we sufficiently market that opportunity? Right, so if you don't know it's there, do you know to show up? So it's a little bit of both, right? So I agree, say people show up or no one shows up. But have we done a good job of marketing that opportunity?
That's my question. What can we do to market it better or change the format so that we would have more people or?
Just in my experiences, that's how it starts.
I know Hillier did, tried like coffee.
Every superintendent I've talked to.
Come have coffee on Saturdays, they tried it on Saturdays.
Where only two board members, where it's not a meeting and you're not coming.
And it still was the same people that they had heard, already heard from.
And again, sometimes it's the verification of the fact that things are going well.
Like, how many times do people talk to you at, they'd rather talk to you at a basketball game? You know?
When we get to 14, 15, they show up.
True.
Depends on what's on the agenda.
Right.
Depends who's on the agenda.
Yeah, no mascot naming.
Well, depends on what the subject matter is.
That's a lot of it, it's got broader interest, yeah.
Yeah, but that's one, I mean, there were all kinds of things at once.
But to your point, to talk about the makeup, I don't want to turn it into the, oh, we've got Linda in the audience, so let's have Linda address that because she addresses policy issues. You know, we should be the ones who are answering the questions.
I wholeheartedly agree with that, that's why, actually in the last one, we had administration not come.
Yeah.
We stayed out.
I'd want to continue that.
Yeah.
It was much better than that.
Yeah, it was.
You can only use it.
Alright.
Anything else?
Oh, just a quick question, this is a reminder, if I may. I noticed on your schedule timeline, you had turf written down, I forgot the year. Are you talking about all three high schools having conversation, status, whatever?
Well, now that you brought it up, I got an email today from Jay Wolf saying that there is going to be a golf fundraiser on August 3rd sponsored by Joe's Bar in Grill or Cafe or whatever it's called. Is it Average Joe's?
For Joe's Original?
Yeah, Joe's Original.
I was going to say, is there just a Joe's bar?
Well, if you can say it's Average Joe's, Average Joe's is off of San Gus, and I never know what to call that Joe's. But it's August 3rd and apparently Joe's has the information in there and it benefits Olin Tangi.
Because I thought I heard that they're trying to-
I think what you'll see happen is, you know, once Olin Tangi sees it, they'll say, oh, okay, we can do this too.
I'd really like Jeff to come in and do a presentation when it's done, photos and slides or something with-
Well, they did the timelines, right? As far as I know, they had some, they had a student at Orange, obviously it's Liberty, a student come out at the same time every day, every day of construction.
And take a picture?
And take a photo, so you can see the world.
I wanted to also, the question you asked last night, I believe, was will the turf committee be back?
Right, to gift it. Because I thought, I thought of the process.
I got the, this is from, text from Jeff, we did not accept the turf yet, we approved the facility change. We need a letter from each to accept in August, so they will be back.
And so it'll be listed as a donation to the district.
So we'll get to that.
Because I knew that's the way, because then usually that happens with the backdrops or whatever the heck they're-
Right, they can move forward.
The baseball.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you, I was like, the backdrop, that's not the right word. My son played baseball for like 10 years. Yeah, that they come back then and it shows up as a, they don't necessarily come back, but for them, for this, I'd want them to come back.
Oh, yeah.
Have it wrapped with a big bow, key to the city, something.
Yeah, we'd have the silver shovel.
From Orange. We're much more utilitarian over on the Liberty side. That's for show, not for-
Go for show. I guess if we don't have anything else, we can wrap it up.
Someone should let Adam know.
I'll let him know.
Know that we're not here till eight. So moved.
Second.
Call the roll please.
Ms. Dunbar?
Yes.
Ms. Fiesel?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you very much.